I will call this meeting, this work session of the Pawtucket School Committee to order at 6:30. Ms. Leslie, please take a roll call.
Ms. Benolo.
Yes.
Mr. Charbonneau.
Yes.
Ms. Grant.
Yes.
Mr. Knight. Ms. Delarby.
Yes.
Mr. Marino.
Yes.
Ms. Doobie.
Here. Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America, in which we stand, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda is recognition. Is this?
No.
No, okay. We are recognizing everyone. Next on the agenda is public participation. Ms. Leslie, is there anyone signed up?
No.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of previous meeting minutes, 12422 and 12522. There's been a motion to approve both minutes by Ms. Benolo. It's been seconded by Ms. Grant. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Opposed? The motion carries six to zero. So we are now on the item Facilities Department Uniform Shirts and Pants. As a reminder to the committee, this was tabled. I believe Mr. Charbonneau said that he would like us to look more closely at Pawtucket firms. And so we decided to table this item, I believe, last month. And Mr. Silva's here to let us know where we are.
Okay, well, we went back out with the RFP. We personally delivered it to three, we hand-delivered it to three Pawtucket companies and one from North Providence, who is our, who is our current vendor right now. We received three responses to our RFP. The first one was Our Place Tuxedo from North Providence. The shirts range from $10.56 to $19.86 each. Pants range from $26.84 each to $32.21 each, depending on size. Spare recognition from Pawtucket. Shirts $13.89 to $20.19 each, depending on style and size. Pants $20.79 to $21.79, depending on size. And the last response was Classic Customs shirts from Pawtucket. Their shirts were $13 each to $27.75, depending on style and size. Pants were $24.50 each to $26.75 each, depending on style and size. The way the RFP was written was the company could bid on either shirts and pants together or shirts separately, pants separately, and that's how we were going to reward it. The lowest bids came in for the shirts from Our Place Tuxedo and for the pants from Spare Recognition from Pawtucket. And those are who we recommend awarding this bid to.
There's been a motion to approve the action of Our Place Tuxedo's proposal for shirts and Spare Recognition for pants from Ms. Benolo. It's been seconded by Mr. Delarby and Ms. Grant. Ms. Benolo.
The manufacturer of the shirts and the manufacturer of the pants, are they the same at each? I'm just wondering if the quality is the same.
Yes, it's the same manufacturers. We, we sent out a model number, like two different model numbers from the same manufacturer they can choose from.
Okay, so.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Charbonneau.
What was the, what was the price difference?
For the shirts, they were, Our Place Tuxedo were $10.50 each to $19.86 each, depending on style and size. The next lowest was Classic Customs, $13 each to $27.75. And Spare Recognition, the shirts were $13.89 to $20.19. Annually, we go out approximately with 125 shirts. So the savings would be, with the shirts going to Our Place would be about $800 over Classic Custom.
You did a crunching calculation of sizes?
Yes, we, we have that back at the office. I can send that to you.
No, I just want to make sure because the, the $10 is.
We go from small all the way up to four XL for the shirts.
So it would be if it was small and nobody took a small, then it looks better than it is, so.
Ms. Grant.
So if you, if you did the, figured it all out, both shirts and pants, would Spirit Recognition kind of be within the running? Because it looks like they're pants.
Ms. Grant, the motion, sorry, I just want to clarify, the motion at the bottom, and the motion is to actually get Spirit Recognition pants?
Oh.
And our tuxedo shirts.
Oh.
That's my clarify.
Yes, we were going to split the RFP.
Oh, okay, so it wouldn't be given as a whole?
No, no. The RFP was written, like I said, so you, they could either bid on the whole package together or bid on the pants separately, shirt separately, and that's how we were going to reward it.
Okay, all right. I apologize for that.
Oh, that's okay.
Mr. Marino.
To clarify, the, the, the savings, if we were to, so you, you, you said it was 800 annually?
800 annually. The RFP was over a two-year contract, so it would be $1,600 total approximately.
So that. Thanks. He has a small, 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 small. Oh, um, figure annually, we were. Oh.
No, that's fine. If you have extra money in that account, let it be extra, you know?
Right.
So that's perfect.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Benolo?
I see the electricity budget is so much less than what we budgeted for. Transportation, moving the 10,000, we still have sufficient funds to cover us for the rest of the year there?
Yes, we had some, we had been told that we would use 43 buses and I think that we are on 39. I think they added one, but yeah, 38, 39. And we did have monies in there, but it was under the transportation line. We didn't put it to the cleaning object. We were a little bit short. It's more than 10,000. We were about 10,000 short. So yes, we do, to answer your question, ensure.
Thank you.
And yes, I also, I know that we've mentioned at several meetings that transportation, we've had savings there. And this is our first year of busing our high school students as well. So as we, as we approach the end, I would love to hear kind of a general like overview, it can just be a discussion item of how this first year of busing our high school students, I mean, this is, this is a big step for Pawtucket to be able to offer this. I'm curious how many of our high school students are, you know, what are ridership numbers? And whether we have, if we're running half empty buses, whether we can even decrease that radius and offer busing to even more high school students.
Lisa, Lynn are all over that and it's great.
Like I said, as we get to the end of the year and we can look retrospectively back at moving towards the next.
I would say maybe around May or June.
And the good thing is, is just so you know, is I know we're not doing the Davies with the whole savings, but we have a lot more flexibility. Would you say so, Lisa? I mean, we have a lot more flexibility because the buses are not leaving Pawtucket. You know, they're in Pawtucket.
Yeah.
So even though we had gained some additional cost and we expanded our bus and we found ways that would help us do the tiers better. So that's probably why the buses are less than what they had planned.
I see no further discussion. Ms. Listy, please take a roll call on the budget transfers.
Ms. Benolo.
Yes.
Mr. Chavino.
Yeah.
Ms. Grant. Mr. Larrabee.
Yes.
Mr. Marino.
Yeah.
Ms. Dubey.
Yes. Motion carries six to zero. The next item is approval of Blue X agreement.
Okay, so this is a little after the fact and I have to apologize because we were unaware of this. We have a consultant that works with the city, as you know, that we belong to the Rimmick Group with a number of districts. And we have a consultant that is paid by Blue Cross that works for the city and the school department. And he was, you know, working with them and negotiating. And I think what happened was is while he was doing that, they hadn't realized that they didn't ask us to put forth a new revised contract agreement. And so when it was realized, when all of the negotiating for the guaranteed discounts on employee prescriptions, when you go and pick up your prescriptions, as well as the employer share, they said that, you know, he wanted to see an overall, the consultant wanted an overall reconciliation to show us because they have a limit of 400,000 to reach and a minimum agreement. And that's when they realized that there was not a signed agreement. So this is why we have it before you. We'll probably have a new one coming up because this ended and that's what they're working on once they see this reconciliation. So it's more about Joanna from the city already signed it, but I explained to them that I have to bring the agreement to the school committee for approval before signing it.
The motion to approve the agreement by Ms. Benolo, it's been seconded by Ms. Grant. Any discussion? Ms. Listy, please take a roll call.
Ms. Benolo.
Yes.
Mr. Chavino.
Yes.
Ms. Grant. Mr. Larrabee.
Yes.
Mr. Marino. Ms. Dubey.
Yes, the motion carries six to zero. The next item is approval to purchase equipment and our kitchen service renovations for district school lunch program in accordance with purchasing requirements. Just define.
Okay, so as you know, for the last two years under the pandemic, we have been operating the food service program, which is an enterprise fund. And in the accounting world, that's what we call a self-operating fund. Prior to the pandemic, as you know, we had some negative balances that we would have to fund if we, you know, we weren't allowed to pay for those out of federally reimbursed funds that came back to the district. So we funded it with local funds. And under this, the pandemic, there has been some great programs allowing the students eat free, but the reimbursements have been generous. And also some COVID relief funds were given and we now have a fund balance in the nutrition fund. So it is good news because it allows us to improve some of the old equipment that hasn't been able to be done. If you remember, I believe a year and a half to two years ago, we had a guarantee and we were allowed, we used that guarantee, the school committee voted and we did a renovation at Jenks. And I guess the ovens were, I'm not sure if they were original, I wouldn't know, but they were pretty old and some of them were broken. But the new kitchen looks beautiful and it has been proven to be successful. But in addition, each year, RIDE requires us, under regulation, that we can't carry more than three months of expenses in the fund balance. And because of the programs and the reimbursements that have been going on during the pandemic and the pandemic relief funds, we have greater than that. So bringing forward to you a recommendation, and Josh is on the line listening, he wasn't able to be here tonight. So if you have any questions, he may be able to, he'll probably be able to answer them for you. But we had put together a list and we had mentioned this before, that we would work on putting together where we could use some equipment. He went through, we talked about it, we met two or three times and the list is before you. And he also included the possible, the possibility of recommending a Goff Middle School and a Slater Middle School kitchen renovation similar to what they did. It won't be the same, they're smaller, but similar to what they did at Jenks to improve the program and have new equipment. And he included, and I included it in your packet, some pictures of the areas, what they look like now.
Is there a motion on the table? There's a motion to approve the purchase of equipment for Ms. Benolo. It's been seconded by Ms. Grant. Ms. Benolo, you have a question?
Yes. The equipment that you have itemized for Baldwin, we expect that Baldwin will be torn down in September. So the equipment that you're purchasing for there, is that equipment that will be able to go into the new building or repurposed?
Certainly. We will ensure that when we come before you, if this is approved, with some actual purchases, because this large quantity would require us to come back so that you could approve any purchases that we make, we would ensure that we would have a repurpose. If the space warrants it, again, I don't know the design that kitchen will hold, we would certainly, we'd be able to get new equipment. But if we can repurpose it and use it in the building or repurpose it into another building of your choosing, we will do so. But we will make sure that we think about that when we're getting ready to make the purchases to bring before you for approval.
So to clarify for the committee, this vote is not to buy this stuff as soon as we say go. This is a vote saying that we agree that we should be using this money to purchase equipment and you would go out and then come back to us and say, this is our, this is what we.
Large, yes, this is large. We would want to do either a bid or find a purchasing collaborative. I think with something this large and we'll, you know, relook at it, we'll take into account about ensuring that we buy equipment that's being able to be repurposed. We would come back before you because it would be a large purchase.
Okay.
And same thing with the, if you approve to do renovations, we would put a package together as we did with the Jenks one. I believe we went up to bid and we had Colly as well to see that project. But we would do the same thing and come before you for your approval. This is just, just getting permission to let you know why we need to spend down some funds in there and what we're looking to recommend and if you are okay with it.
Okay. Ms. Chavino.
Melissa, you touched on my question. So we approve this, but when we did the work at Jenks, we ended up paying more than the approval of the equipment because we brought in Colly's and I think we brought in an architect. And so assuming that this gets approved, what's the plan? Or where would the additional funding come to make sure that we can handle the equipment and put it in place and?
So we have, ready? We have a million dollars sitting in the nutrition fund. I don't think you guys have ever had a million dollars sitting in the fund balance. So we'll ensure that we put together RFPs that will be able to, we don't want to zero that out. But we have a million dollars sitting in there and we really can't carry more than, I think we. Want to say we ended up spending between everything. We ended up spending 40, 400,000. So I think we ended up spending 70 out of the, we ended up transferring 70,000 from the capital reserve fund. With your permission.
Ms. Grant.
Would we be able to use some of that money in the nutrition fund to buy new appliances for the kitchen and the, for the transition students? Because that's where their food is brought to. And that definitely needs some, definitely. But if we're talking about appliances and things like that.
So it would have to be, the equipment would have to be being used by the food service program?
It, well, from what I understand.
And if it is.
That is dual purpose.
Sure.
I believe there is a warmer that is very outdated that's in there.
And I certainly, I certainly will ensure that before we use any funds from this enterprise fund, that we'll check. We will check with RIDE to make sure that we're not violating any kind of federal law that we don't know. Absolutely.
Thank you, Melissa.
Ms. Benolo.
If it requires an architect or the input from Colly's, like you said, the redesign over Goff, is that covered by that fund?
Right, because it would be, it would be a professional service to support that, the program. So if we're going to do a renovation, we would probably need some architectural design work. But again, we would come before the committee with the proposal in a package. Same thing, you know, it's probably best to be overseen by, and it shouldn't be any more than last time because these two, and I'm not really good at the size of the kitchens, but from my understanding, I think the two of those areas are probably the size of what Jenks is. Maybe together, they might be slightly bigger, but together, they were about half the size of Jenks.
Ms. Benolo?
Sorry, I was going to say, continue.
Okay. So also Brewster Architects are putting a new egress exit into Goff right by the kitchen.
Okay.
So I don't know if it's structurally going to change any of the, just so, they talked about it at the last meeting.
Sure, I'll certainly ask the question. So Brewster, and I'm going to check to see about the kitchen that's downstairs for the transition program.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is, this is a welcome change from, I believe, if we remember, two to three years ago, where our school lunch program, we were having different conversations. And I do hope that the federal government does extend because I think that every school can testify to how much easier it is and how much more equitable it is to have all students in our Title I schools receiving free lunch. Because this is the benefit of it. So I look forward to seeing these come before the committee.
I see no further discussion. Ms. Listy, please take a roll call.
Ms. Benolo.
Yes.
Mr. Chavino.
Yes.
Ms. Grant. Mr. Larrabee.
Yes.
Mr. Marino.
Yes.
Ms. Dubey.
Yes. Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is Curvin McCabe fence.
All right. The school department has actively been seeking proposals for fencing gates in the lodge play yard at Curvin McCabe, so it can be completely fenced in. There was concerns of safety for the children as they could get out on Tocata Street and they could also get into the parking lot, the teacher's parking lot. So to fence it in, it would include 23, 23 feet of four-foot galvanized chain link fencing, one four-foot swing gate, one 14-foot slide gate and another 18-foot slide gate. I included a crude drawing in with the packet today. As you can see, the light blue that runs along the side is the 23 foot of the four-foot fencing. Then right on the side of that, in the purple, is the swing gate for the walkway. So it would be one that swings open to go in the walkway. The red next to that one on Cottage Street is, would be the slide gate. It would be a 14-foot slide gate. The reason we need that is because that's the way our stander gets in there to sand the lots. On the other side, adjacent to Baxter Street, we would have a 18-foot slide gate. So our plows could get in that way and that way it would completely fence off that play yard that's there. There were four openings, walkway openings, that had no fence or anything. So what we did is our maintenance staff replaced our, actually fixed those and installed little gates for them. So that's closed off right now. We went out on the MPA. Unfortunately, there was no Pawtucket companies on the MPA for fencing. We received four proposals in response. One was from United Fencing for 11,500. Another one was Soul Sauce Construction for 11,800. Citywork Corp., 12,285. And then Oak Hill Farms for 12,350. This would be coming out of the local budget and we recommend that we accept United Fence's proposal to fence in the play yard over at Curvin.
And a motion to approve United Fence by Ms. Grant's been seconded by Ms. Benolo. Any discussion? Ms. Benolo.
United Fence before?
Yes, we used them at the old winters when we did the fence, the pushgate fences. I think it was six years ago, maybe? But yes, we have used them. There was no problems, no.
Mr. Chavino.
Oh, sorry. Did you have a question?
I did, just in maybe more just a comment. But seeing that we're doing a lot of fence work in the district, I just happen to, to price this out on my own, commercial grade, you know, 13-gauge chain link fence, even at the high side, for what's here, it was like 1,200 in material. So I don't know that the MPA is necessarily doing us any favors at this point. I mean, I'm going to vote to approve this because I think we need to get it done. But perhaps next time we look to either, I know sometimes the RFPs are difficult and when you're talking 10,000, 20,000, what have you. But if you double the material, there's, there's 3,000 here of material and there's 8,500 worth of labor.
Yep.
This is a, this is a one-day job for a fence company. I would assume maybe a day and a half?
Yep, probably around that. We can certainly go out for RFPs in the future on it.
And I just think, you know, based on how tightly they were all, the prices were all put together.
Yes.
And then when you go out and actually price the material yourself, I recognize they, there's a profit component to this, but it seems, you know, for the, I should have not. I'd like to go, try a different method next time.
Definitely, I can do that. I can do that.
Seeing no further discussion, Ms. Listy, please take a roll call.
Ms. Benolo.
Yes.
Mr. Chavino.
Yes.
Ms. Grant. Mr. Larrabee.
Yes.
Mr. Marino. Ms. Dubey.
Yes, the motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is Nezdek Executive Search Contract. Ms. Rabbit?
Dr. Williams, if you want to introduce.
Good evening. The school department is researching for a new principal for Slater Middle School. As we thought very hard about that search, we decided that we needed to use an executive search to find that perfect person. Nezdek is well-known in New England. They do executive searches for school districts. They've worked with several school districts currently in Rhode Island, East Greenwich, Smithfield, Lincoln, to name a few, East Providence. And they're well-known. They have an incredible database of prospective school districts and employees. And they are superior at finding exceptional people. And we are looking for an exceptional principal. So we are bringing this contract to you tonight to ask you to approve.
And a motion to approve the Nezdek Executive Search Contract by Ms. Benolo, it's been seconded by Mr. Larrabee. Ms. Grant.
Before reaching out to this company, have we on our own posted anything on School Spring?
We have.
And we haven't received anyone of, of, so, so School Spring, that's something they use within the United States, correct?
Correct.
So what is this company going to provide us at School Spring dozen?
So School Spring is really a passive device, right? You need to log in to be looking for a job and you need to look it up and you need to search. You can search by state, you can search by position. This is a push out, right? Nezdek is going to push our requests to all of their database, which is quite immense. Most of us, who are administrators, get these notices from them. They are going to assist us with looking through the applicants that we get. They'll be collecting the applicants that, for us, will still continue to use School Spring and all the other means that we use to find exceptional candidates. But we're in a very difficult job market right now, as I'm sure everyone has heard. And we feel we really need an exceptional candidate. And Nezdek is that push. So they'll basically, they'll help us to write. For instance, one of the tools that we'll be using, that they recommended, is using our websites, using our social media. They'll be assisting with that. But it's that really, that push out to aggressively look for a person. And that's why you see school departments all over doing and using them as an executive search.
Ms. Benolo, Mr. Chavino.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Grant, are you done?
Yeah, no, I just said thank you.
Ms. Benolo.
Okay, so we have actually used Nezdek before.
Correct.
When we were searching for superintendent, I think prior to you, Debbie Silky. And they do advertise on School Spring as well. Well, are you limiting the number of applications that you get?
I mean. No.
We had hundreds.
No, I mean, they will assist us in searching through them, but honestly, the more, you know, is better for us in our hopes of getting a high caliber qual, you know.
Okay.
Qualified person.
Thank you. Mr. Chavino.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I get it, maybe that, maybe that we use a firm like Nezdek for a superintendent search. But when we start kind of picking and choosing which, which middle schools, grammar, grammar schools, high schools, we're going to use this firm for to select a principal, I think we muddy the waters. We don't have an internal candidate. And what does this do to our internal candidate? And I think when you start broadening the scope, so if we get an ideal candidate from, pick a state, what is it that's going to draw them? Because we now no longer control the hiring process.
No, we do. We absolutely do control the hiring.
Well, no, you, the superintendent does. We don't.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
And is this, is you using a firm for selecting a principal consistent with our hiring policy?
I, I would have to pull it up and it is online. Our attorney could pull that up. And I think we could definitely approve, if we did approve this, it would be pending if it's in agreement with our hiring process.
Because we do have a, an interview committee for the candidates, right? So Nezdek, so Nezdek promises what? They promise to deliver us a pool of candidates or a candidate for the position?
A pool of candidates.
Okay, and then we're going to, I don't know. I don't, I don't like the direction I think this sends the district. That's, that's my, that's my personal opinion.
Ms. Benolo.
How long did we advertise on School Spring?
We advertise on School Spring until the job is filled.
No, how long have we? You said we already did.
Right, we've only had the, we've had the advertisement up for principals. We did what was called a, we've been looking for assistant principals. So we've had a, we've had a School Spring position up for that in the past. Yesterday, we refreshed up for a principal and an AP. But I will tell you, in the past, as we've tried to do searches, we've had a very difficult time finding candidates. And we've talked to other districts and it's just the nature of the job market right now.
So it's just that with Pawtucket so up and coming and we're doing so much, I'm surprised that we don't have much interest within the state of Rhode Island or local Massachusetts that for people to come here.
Dr. Williams. This particular school has had a high turnover, right? We've been looking at, as we all know, for probably six years. So the, my, my belief is that we need to do something a little bit different. We've been trying the same thing. It hasn't worked. So, you know, that's just my opinion and I believe it's a professional opinion, knowing also what is out there in surrounding states, Connecticut, Massachusetts. I do think that we're in a situation where we don't want to be looking at a continual turnover in one particular school. So that's why we, when we talked about it as an internal team, we thought that this was the way to go.
Ms. Marino, and I believe I saw a hand over here as well, Ms. Grant. Ms. Marino.
So the, certainly have as that it be, I'm a habit. Who always out, um, source our hiring.
Ms. Grant, did you have a question? Or, I'm sorry, and then Mr. Chavino.
The question, oh, the question I had is, so when I asked you if we advertised this position on School Spring, it's, the principal for Slater has only been on School Spring for one day.
It has.
The next time you might want to clarify that.
Okay. I thought, so I'll just clarify, I thought the question was, would we advertise on School Spring? Absolutely.
No, it was, did we advertise on School Spring first before going out to it? So I don't think.
We also have advertised internally for our contract today.
Yeah, okay.
Ms. Chavino.
Yeah, I think to, kind of, on Mr. Marino. Yeah, I, I think to, kind of on Mr. Marino's point, I, I don't, I don't know if we approved this for Slater, how we don't approve it for every other principal vacancy we have in the district from here till none of us are on this committee.
I, so, um, I, I am in favor of this. I will be voting in favor of this if it comes up, um, or if it's not tabled. Um, I, I do think that everything that I've been reading is that there are principal vacancies just happening across the country, superintendent vacancies. When Boston Superintendent announced they were leaving, they, they said in the article, the amount of vacancies that they were expecting in Massachusetts, and they said it was the highest that they had seen coming. And I know that multiple school districts around us have looked to use firms like this. So I, I see it as a need to do this in order to keep pace with our surrounding communities that are using this. I do not think that I would approve this as a standing policy of how we get all of our administrators moving forward. But I do see a school that I have been on this committee for six, eight years. I've been on this committee for several years, and I feel like it's just been a churn at one school, not every school. At one school, not of, not of principals leaving to go on to future, but being replaced because we need to find a, um, a leader that we think might work better. And so I, like I said, I will be approving this, but I, I, I also hear my committee's concerns.
Ms. Grant. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Larvy.
Oh, okay.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm also in favor of this policy, although I'm not the biggest fan of outsourcing, um, this type of work. I do feel like, um, when I think about our administration, um, and then especially when I think about the diversity of our administration within this district and our central office and, um, and, and how we currently operate, I do think it, it might be time to really start to explore ways in which we can really broaden our search and find ways to get, um, uh, pools of candidates that also can reflect our community, because I feel like right now, um, our administration does not reflect that community. Um, and I think this is another way that we can assure that we're doing a due diligence to reach out and try new methods to, to get there. Um, I think diversity, um, especially amongst our, our brown and, uh, black faculty is low in the city, um, where we have such a high population of students of color. And, um, so, yeah, I'm all for hiring internal candidates and, um, and things that I saw, but once again, when our pool is so limited, when it comes to teachers of color and things that I saw, I think we do need to try to find different means to, to attract high-quality candidates to our district. And then I would agree, um, since I've been playing, uh, paying a more close attention to Pawtucket, and the amount of turnover at Slater is high. I don't think Slater is amongst those who we want to attract and bring into our city is, I don't think, I would like to say is the ideal place that, you know, the best principal is gonna be like, you know what, let's come to Pawtucket. But I don't think that's the, the key when it comes to Slater. And I think, um, this right here would be a, a process that could help us, and, um, we can see how it goes. I, I wouldn't be in favor of doing this for every single position, but I do think it is something that, at this moment, uh, especially with a school in such need and in a school of such high turnover, that, um, this could be best for us at this moment.
Ms. Grant, and then Mr. Knight.
Um, I've kind of been listening to what everyone says, and I myself, I, I don't know how many times I've told the superintendent, we need to change at Slater, we need something different. But I don't necessarily think, um, it might be, um, the person at the top. Um, what I'd like to suggest is that we table this for tonight, and I, I think we, I think we, as a, um, school committee, should hear what you guys discussed. What, how did you break it down? Um, where do you think the problems are? Um, is it really, is it really? You know, the, this school has, that has had turnover and has had, you know, problems for many years. I, I think until after Walter Guest left, you know, prior to that, I think, you know, um, things were great there. But, but I, I don't think this is gonna be the answer. Uh, and what worries me is, I think we really have to have a plan. I, I think it's more than just someone going into that school and just, you know, laying the law down and, um, you know, I agree with Mr. Larvy, um, ju- diversity would be great. But like he also said, I think, um, it, it's something that's very difficult to find. But, but I think we need, I, I don't think just jumping into, um, putting someone in that position or, you know, going through, um, all these resumes. I, I think we really need to dig deeper and kind of figure out and, and know what's going on over there. Um, and I, I think until we can get a report or something from, from you guys, you know, the administration letting us know where some of these problems are coming from, um, you know, I, to be honest with you, I, I'll be honest with you. Um, you know, I know Mr. Cidero has left, and he's at Shea now, but I, I think this is something that probably should have been being worked on while, you know, someone might have been in the position. Because I think we've all been aware that this particular school is a problem. And, um, I just think we're gonna need a lot more than just this company coming in and you guys sitting interviewing people. I, I think there's a lot more to it over there, and, um, I, I think this time we really gotta try to get it right. Because it's only at the expense of the students, so.
Mr. Knight.
Motion to table.
Mr. Knight, you're unmuted, but I can't hear you.
I'm not muted. Motion to table.
No, I, I have my volume up. Mr. Knight.
Motion to table.
Oh, I heard him. There's a motion to table, um, is there a second? Um, Ms. Lucy, please call the roll. Ms. Benello.
Yes.
Mr. Chavino.
Yes.
Ms. Grant. Mr. Knight.
Yes.
Mr. Larvy.
No.
Mr. Marino.
Yes.
Ms. Doobie.
No. The motion to table carries five to two. Uh, the next item on our agenda is field trips for committee approval.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm gonna take that one as well. Um, this is a request from DECA. This is a trip, um, that they've often made. They are going to Atlanta, they are taking six students and one chaperone, and they are staying in a hotel.
There's been a motion to approve the field trips for committee approval by Ms. Benello, it's been seconded by Mr. Larvy. Um, is there any discussion? Is, did he put his hand down? Mr. Knight, you can unmute yourself if you have a, oh, he put his hand down. Okay, um, I, I, this is, um, exciting. I, uh, where I teach at Johnson New Wales, um, students, um, often talk about their DECA experiences as extremely, um, valuable in helping to, um, drive forward their career path. They put them on resumes and, um, and I, I'm excited to see this.
It's an exciting trip.
Um, I, seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion carries seven to zero. Um, we are now in discussion items. We have three discussion items. Budget transfers, uh, January twenty twenty-two, overtime report, January twenty twenty-two, and vendor payment report, January twenty twenty-two. Um, as per usual, we can take them all at once unless somebody would prefer to take something separately. And if there's any questions, you can, uh, direct them to the appropriate people.
Ms. Benello.
The only question I have is, is Chris still here?
Yes.
When will we be getting a work order report? Okay, thank you.
Um, well, these discussion items are the last item on our agenda. Um, I'm, I'll give a second more. I see people kind of flipping pages. Um, but otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. The motion is adjourned by Ms.